Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of Bedford City Council. If you would please rise, join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Asbury.
Here.
Saunders.
Here.
Spinks.
Here.
Janutis.
Here.
Lou Hardy.
Here. Council, you have the minutes of the work session of November 21st, 2022. Any corrections to that? Seeing none, can I have a motion for acceptance by Asbury, second by Saunders? Call or roll, please.
Asbury.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutis.
Yes.
Lou Hardy.
Yes.
Smith.
Coche.
Yes. And you have the minutes of the regular meeting of November 21st, 2022. Any corrections to that? Seeing none, can I have a motion for acceptance by Spinks, second by Lou Hardy? Call or roll, please.
Asbury.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutis.
Yes.
Lou Hardy.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Coche.
Yes. And you have the minutes of the budget hearing meeting of November 28th, 2022. Any corrections to that? Seeing none, can I have a motion for acceptance by Asbury, second by Smith? Call or roll.
Asbury.
Stand.
Saunders.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutis.
Stand.
Lou Hardy.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Coche.
Yes. Dr. Johnson. We have something from the school today? We're still working out those logistics. I had asked the school board and the school administration if they wanted time to come before council just to give a brief outline on what's happening with the schools. I think it's important that we hear that from them, so I extend that invitation to them. And we were going to try to do it on the second meeting of the month, so not surprised they're not here today, but we will allow them to have that time if they're here. Under old business, ordinance number 10,033-22.
Being an ordinance, to make appropriations for current expenses and expenditures of the city of Bedford, Ohio during the year 2023 and declaring an emergency.
Can I have a motion for suspension? By Spinks, second by Lou Hardy? Call or roll, please.
Asbury.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutis.
Yes.
Lou Hardy.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Coche.
Yes. A motion for third and final by Saunders, second by Asbury. Jennifer.
Yes, this is the third and final reading for the appropriations for the year of 2023. We've already gone through all of our budget meetings, and this is what we have before us for approval this evening.
Questions? Seeing none, call or roll, please.
Asbury.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutis.
Yes.
Lou Hardy.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Coche.
Yes. Resolution number 2593-22.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with the Regional Income Tax Authority, Agency I should say, otherwise known as RITA, to participate in the Regional Council of Governments for the purposes of administration and collection of municipal income tax in the city of Bedford, Ohio, declaring an emergency.
It is our wish to put it on second reading of the motion for such, by Lou Hardy, second by Janutis. Call or roll, please.
Asbury.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutis.
No.
Lou Hardy.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Coche.
Yes. Like I said, we put that on three readings. I know there's been some confusion of the word "emergency," declaring an emergency. That's a process we put on almost all of our ordinances, so that in case of a true emergency, someone has to be paid, or there's a deadline, we can go ahead and do that. But as we have always done, and in the past as long as I've been involved here, if it's something to do with money, or fees, or a big deal to the public, we always do the three readings. Now, to clarify, we've done two readings, and if we need a third reading, it will be next Monday, won't be at the regular, next Monday at 6:00 here, to do the third reading. And of course, at that time, we'll take the vote whether or not it happens, but I want to give advance notice. We have to move it up because if it gets passed, we have some deadlines with RITA, so we can do that. If it gets shot down, then we don't have to worry about anything, so. So I just wanted to put that out. If we need that meeting, it will be next Monday. Excuse me?
I didn't say anything, Mayor.
Well, you didn't have to do that.
Do what?
With your...
Oh, call the U Penn Opio?
Yeah. Then if you're going to do that, you can leave right now.
You're assuming, call the police if you want me to leave.
Please.
Show up. You should.
Anyhow, so that's what we're going to do. If it has to come to a vote, we did not decide tonight whether it's going to be passed or not that will be done, that meeting, but due to time constraints, if it passes, we have to do it by next Monday. I just wanted to get that out there so you can all be aware and show up at that meeting. Reports, Mr. City Manager.
Did you vote on that?
Yeah, we voted, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple items real quickly. Wanted to thank everyone for coming out to the annual tree lighting. I'd like to thank the Service Department, all the staff that actually worked on the square, but also all the staff that worked on everything else, because there's, you know, three, sometimes four individuals that are off of the, you know, leaf collection and roadwork dedicated to the square, and that entire department did an outstanding job. I also wanted to thank Denzo Ward and his family, and the Make Them Know Your Name Foundation for providing all the turkeys and gifts to all the families and the children. Very much appreciated. Just a quick update on the Cresswell Gas Line project. Dominion did notify us that they're working with their contractor, and they are planning to start this week. If that changes, I will provide an update to council, but they did inform us that their goal is to start that project this week. We did make progress with our discussions with ODOT. I know a couple meetings ago, I talked about the Broadway resurfacing project, the initial estimates for that project, when we were notified beginning of 2022, was just under $3 million. Couple months ago, it spiked up to $5.9 million, with ODOT telling the city that we're going to have to absorb the difference, which isn't an option. We went back and had some constructive discussions with them, obviously modified the plans a little bit, but we're at a spot where ODOT is accepting the modifications. I think we've worked through the budget items, and there's a very good possibility that what we've accomplished will ensure that that project happens in 2023. They'll be working to sell that project, and most likely it'll start in the spring, obviously, when the weather breaks. There'll be a pre-con meeting after the first of the year, where we get, obviously, details on that, as far as where they're planning to start and whatnot. Obviously, traffic will have to be maintained, but it is a necessary improvement. I think it'll be great to have that roadway completed, and again, it's from corp limit to corp limit. Last item, staff are just working to complete the two grants. I believe there was legislation at the last meeting, both the county grants, CDBG, as well as CDSG, and those are going towards improvements on the commons, upgrades, as well as upgrades to the train depot, restrooms, audio, a lot of those items. End of report.
Thank you. Mr. Wonder, Director.
No report, but thank you all for coming. If anybody has any questions, be happy to answer them. Thank you. Bye.
Mrs. Flannett, Director.
We have no report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, Mr. Asbury.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, thanks to everybody that made the event on the square, the tree lighting, such a success. Denzo Ward and his foundation, the ice sculptor, happens to be a son of somebody that I went to school with, the firefighters for their donuts and hot chocolate, everything was greatly appreciated. My grandson actually got to help throw the switch to turn the lights on, so he was kind of in his glory, so that's kind of cool. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. Just like to mention, I'd like to thank everybody that contributed, either wine or donations to the BDA's Wine Fundraiser to benefit the Shop with the Cop program. We raised a little over $700, so that's either four or five additional kids that will be making the trip to Shop with the Cop this Saturday. A reminder, I'm not sure what time they're actually leaving and heading towards Target, but you may want to stay off of the road between a certain time, you know, whatever time they're going to be leaving. I know there's some people that kind of get a little upset because it ties up their day and creates traffic. It'll be okay. You'll go around, or you'll wait till next weekend. So it's a great program, and thank you to everybody that's involved with that. Bedford Downtown Alliance would also like to remind you that our mitten fence will be up probably through the end of February, and the mitten fence is on the running fence between Giannino's and Spirit of Pathosus, and the idea is if you have a new or gently used, clean scarves, gloves, hats, that you can bring those down, clip those to the rope that's down there, so if somebody does need it, they can take what they need. So we've done a good job so far with contributions. I thank everybody that has contributed to this point, and let's keep it going throughout the holiday season. Having said that, we know that the snow is going to be coming sooner than later. We're approaching the second weekend in December, and I think we've been lucky so far. Just a couple reminders, when it does snow, when the snow accumulates, exceeds two inches, a parking ban goes into effect throughout the city. That means there's no parking on city streets when the snow exceeds two inches. Residents are responsible for the snow on their sidewalks, and one other thing, if you do have a removal company take care of your sidewalks, or you drive with both, that snow is supposed to stay on your property. Please don't have them spread it to the neighbors. Other than that, end of report.
Thank you. Mr. Saunders.
Yes, I want to thank everybody also that's involved with square lighting last, or week or so ago. It looks beautiful. You get compliments from other communities that we're still one of the best around, so let's keep it that way. Hopefully, next year, we can do light buildings and stuff downtown. We've got compliments, it's nice to see the lights on City Hall now, and the court too, rather than just dark like it had been for many years, so we're improving little by little. So, in any case, Jeff took most of what I was going to say anyway, of the snow removal, but be careful with the snow. Help your neighbor if they can't do it. If you're able to do it, you know, help them out. This town used to help a lot of seniors with the younger generation. Nowadays, people, some of the younger generation gets bad wraps sometimes, but there are still a few that help out, and seniors definitely are in need, especially on their sidewalks. Be careful when you're getting your driveway plowed, because if you plow up the sidewalk, it's impossible to climb over that, and then the people have to walk in the street, and walking in the street, of course, it's very difficult for cars to maneuver on the streets to begin with, and then you have personnel walking in the street. That creates a heck of a hazard that doesn't need to be done. Also, I'm going to be abstaining from the vote on the item on the trees. I have a zoning issue where I work in Northfield Center Township with the company, so rather than create a conflict there, I will abstain on that vote. Thank you.
Thank you. This is Spinks.
Good evening, everybody. Good to see you, everybody. Good to see you, Annie. My given question, I've received several calls last week, and a couple texts and stuff, on green markers by the catch basins, mainly saw all over of DuHurst area, flora, that I noticed today when I was out again on my board check. I did speak to Debbie, and she was going to have you explain it, that it was our guys doing it. It's the GIS system, and they're going out throughout the city. It's not just in Ward 1, but it's several areas, and they'll be televising the sewer system. Can you kind of explain a little bit more of that?
Well, no, that's accurate. So we're marking, we're marking the certain areas that, as you said, we're televising. There's certain areas, either catch basins, or areas that we know that we have to make repairs to.
Okay.
But our current GIS system that we started a few years ago, our guys are actually, they're out in the field with the tablets, they're, every time we replace hydrants, or make repairs to certain areas, or if we know the blockage in an area that we recently replaced and repaired on First Street, they're identifying all of that and incorporating it into that GIS system. So obviously, as this continues to build out, we'll know where we've replaced valves on various water lines, water lines that were replaced, the years that they were replaced, so we know the age of those. It gets very detailed on that internal GIS. There's obviously an external one that it's built in, and we've worked with the county on this, it's on our website. You can go in there and type in your address, and it'll let you know, you know, what ward you are, where you vote, you know, all kinds of other different information, schools, all of that. You're able to access that right on our website, but the one you're referring to is the ones that our Service Department guys are doing internally.
Okay. Well, they were just a little concerning to know us, too, with all these green markers all over the catch basin, and I was like, okay, what are they doing now? Any updates on the gas line on Cresswell as well? I did see them out there this morning, there's, wasn't the Dominion trucks, it was other trucks that were out. They're still marking, but I did have a couple of residents on Cresswell. Do we know when they're going to start this?
They had indicated that the contractors, you probably saw Dominion subcontractors, so, yes, Dominion wasn't out, they subbed it out, and I can't remember the exact company's name.
RA something.
I can look it up.
Yes, I saw it, they're smaller.
They sent an email out Friday that the plan was to be out on Monday, the 5th today, so I imagine it's...
Okay. They were out, but they didn't start it. I just, like I said, had a couple of residents, your next neighbor was...
This week.
Okay. So I noticed they did have the signs up as well, saying no parking and stuff. I did talk to building today, I had some concerns, because two weeks ago, that curb on, from 132, Greencroft, where the house was torn down, it's taken a while, but I did speak to Rob, and he said that they, again, I guess they had to dig down a little bit deeper, so hopefully that eyesore that's on, Greencroft is going to be taken care of pretty soon. Several complaints this weekend from residents on, about big trucks parking behind the BMV, the old Walmart, all night long, letting their trucks idle. This seems to be getting a pretty big problem with the trucks. I know that this is private property. They did call the police because the truck was idling right by the guy's house on, and it was all night long, and the guy's a bit concerned. Still seeing the parking, and I can know that you, while it is your ward, but it's just such an eyesore with all these trucks parked up everywhere.
We did send a notice out to the owner of the Target parcel, where this was the last property owner that's really, they made an effort, I believe they could have made more of an effort to address that. They received notice from us about two and a half weeks ago. They did contact me last Tuesday, and although the county records show that they're the owner, they had submitted information to myself that that parcel has since transferred, so they are not the owner. They did share with me the contact info for the new owner, and they were contacted today regarding the truck parking. Obviously, we can't cite or vote on private property. Ultimately, we can issue citations to the property owners. We're trying to avoid that, but if they don't address it, that's ultimately what's going to have to happen.
So the trucks parking at night, all night long, out on the truck, that's, so residents can't call the police on that?
Oh, no, no, they can call the police on that. I'm talking about like the parking up by, like, the Target area, where they're just parking, and, yeah.
Well, the thing is, they're leaving, I mean, they're leaving trailers there, they're leaving, the trash did, the tires did get picked up and stuff, but it's just, that's the first thing you see when you come in our city, so it's real bad. Didn't want to touch bases. We had a wonderful time at the Christmas tree lighting, the Bedford Historical Society. We were, Betty was really, our director was really busy giving tours at night, people that had never been in. The museum came in, our store was hopping. We still have tickets for sale for our Christmas fundraiser, so see me or Betty afterwards, that's number, it's going along pretty good. Chris Kringle March will be this Saturday at the historical society's, the museum's store, from, I believe, 11 to 4. There's, I believe, six to seven vendors, there are artists, local artists, that will be setting up. No, I'm not one of them. I'll be at Stephanie's studio with my artwork. So, let's see. Just wanted to touch bases, I just wanted to reach out and thank the many, many residents of mine with the cards and the letters stopping by my house, the phone calls about an incident that happened at the last council meeting that was very uncalled for. It's not an easy job sitting up here. We're all elected officials, we all counsel, sit on council, we all pay taxes, and everything affects us. We're residents, and we're representatives of the people. So when something happens, it's not always easy, and we have to, that's why things go on, you know, second reading, third reading, or a third reading. And so coming and attacking us, that doesn't make our decision any easier. We don't take lightly to threats. I was recently accused of being a bully, which, if it wasn't so sad, it would be hysterical, because everybody that knows me personally knows of me living in the very abusive childhood and adulthood, and I'm a survivor, and how you let bullies win is you let them control you. Well, I've never been a bully, don't plan on ever being a bully, and it's just ridiculous that this should be our safe place to come to work, and I appreciate, all my residents are voting me in for a third term, so I don't think there's one single person out there that's afraid of Councilwoman Sandy Spinks. And I will continue to talk about things that I do for my city, to encourage other people to get out and do something. And I wish the people that spend all their time bashing me or anybody else on council would take that same energy and put it in doing something good for somebody else, deliver a meal on wheels. Go up and volunteer at the Historical Society. Help a kid out, help a neighbor out. Use your energy so we're good. Thank you, and end of report.
Thank you. Mr. Janutis.
Thank you. Can I say Mayor Stan now after the lighting ceremony? The DJ referred to our mayor as Mayor Stan, and it kind of stuck a little bit, and I thought, you know, I'm going to call him Mayor Stan, too, what the heck? But I think maybe the DJ didn't want to try to pronounce Coche, Kookie or something. That was that. It was a fun time for everyone. Now, Sandy hit on something here, and it's true that I think sometimes the residents don't, don't put themselves in our shoes. And we look at things, and, you know, due to rising costs, you know, the question comes up, and you could ask yourself this if you were in our shoes, would you vote to curtail services? Or raise taxes? Those seem like the choices. Or find a way to deliver those services differently? So that's a little bit of what we're dealing with, with this whole thing with RITA, and I've said this before, that I've been inclined to support the move to RITA for these reasons, that no employee will lose their job. I voted against outsourcing for this reason in the past. I am philosophically against privatization and giving away government assets to corporate It's true, the city is looking to save a substantial amount of money at a time when, you know, we just lost a bunch of money with hospital closing. Half of the cities in the state of Ohio use RITA. So I'm kind of thinking that, you know, how could it be so bad if half the cities use it? I mean, if it was really bad for them, I don't suppose that that would be, it would be so popular, but I'm just guessing. The city can always decide not to continue with RITA. That's one of the things that we've been told, but I mean, truth be known, it would be really difficult to be at with RITA for a while, and then all of a sudden, go back to the tax department? I think it's unrealistic to think that that would ever happen, but it is a safeguard. It's my understanding the entire tax department will not be dismantled. Bedford will still have access to all the information in the system. Certain processing will be done by RITA, including invoices at 30, 60, 90 days and whatnot. So another consideration is the reality that pensions are one of Bedford's largest financial liabilities going forward, and that likely that will be supplanted by healthcare costs. We already had to add flopping $500,000 into the next year's budget for healthcare. So those are all things that come into play in these types of decisions. So again, if you were in our shoes, given the rising costs, would you vote to curtail services, or raise taxes, or find a way to deliver them differently? And that's what has come, that's what the move to RITA has really turned into for us. But here's what the residents are saying. Many have had bad experiences with RITA. what the residents are saying. Many have had bad experiences with RITA. I don't know what the specifics of all that is, but if someone said bad experiences with RITA, that kind of sticks with them. And a number of people have mentioned that. There is an objection to losing local control. And I think that's a valid point. Some people think that RITA's expensive and Bedford is placing, is going to place costs onto the residents. I'm told that's, that's not the case. There will be no additional cost to the residents. But people feel that they will not have the same personal contact and service they once had. And I, I think that is the most significant feature. We've been told RITA will not supply personnel to Bedford to help seniors fill out their taxes, for instance. This can only be happen in Brexville. So I think the city of Bedford needs to assure its residents are not going to lose the personal services they have come to expect with the remaining staff. One solution could be to partner with an organization like Benjamin Rose Institute on Aging for the purpose of free tax preparation, which they provide for in a time window preceding tax time here at City Hall or Ellwood. I'm told ARP once did that for us at a time. So I voted against it on second, second reading here. So if Bedford could ally these concerns of the residents, we'd go far to, to accept this move. The challenge being to overcome people's sense that they are losing services. So all that said, something has been weighing heavy on me, welling up, and I hope I, I can dispel it. The most prevalent observation I've encountered here in Bedford, besides the normal talk of speeders, litter bugs and potholes, is people's sense of a lack of community, especially from longtime residents who once knew all the neighbors and could clearly identify whomever walked down the street. We often miss that feeling, but we're no longer a pedestrian society. We stay indoors more. We don't know our neighbors like before. So how do we restore community? Well, it takes some civic engagement for those so inclined and many of the local organizations work towards that end. The first step restoring community, the first step starts with connectedness. That is getting to know one another. And there, there are very limited opportunities. They used to say, if you wanted to know what's going on, you have to come to the council meetings. But we never really expect that many people. And you see how many normally attend. This is, this is an average attendance and there's probably like 10 people here. We offer up a hearing of the citizens, which is not a legal requirement, incidentally, I'm told. I think it's a little daunting for people to have to step up to the podium looking at consults somewhat like a court of law, say your piece and sometimes only get a reply of, "Thank you for your comment." But know that we concern ourselves with all your comments. And I think many of you recognize our city manager's open doors style of listening. He's oftentimes he'll be asking for people's phone numbers to get back after they make comments here. Hearing negative comments is to be expected. It comes with the territory and we have to have thick skins in these positions. Complaining about the government is a national pastime that we all engage in from time to time. Personally, I want to hear everyone's comments, good, bad, or indifferent. But if your comment is merely a personal attack, I can't see how that benefits the process. How are we as a body here expected to act when a comment is only about someone's dislike of another person? We should meet these messages, which indeed may be well-founded and heartfelt, of course, with a measure of humility. And we should have the good sense to apologize if we've insulted anyone by our words or actions. The last couple of years have been very difficult for each and every one of us. We subjected a whole generation of people, especially our children, to fear the world they live in, to fear human contact as a threat to our very survival. These are extraordinary times and extraordinary times require extraordinary people. If there has ever been a time to pull together, it's now. We have to reconcile our differences and pull for each other. All we have is each other. That's what this city is. Former councilperson, Heather Rhodes, and thanks to the work of Jim Wagner, got these council meetings up on YouTube. Now I'm told there are ordinarily some 100 views of a council meeting. That's 10, that's practically 10 times our regular participation, tenfold. That's extraordinary. Another community building forum is on social media. One such Facebook group alone has well over 2,000 members. That's 2,000 voices. And city officials from fire, police, services, taxes have been kind enough to engage with the public, to quell rumors, to set the record straight regarding goings-on and city policies. To me, we seem to be drawing nearer and more in touch with one another. As people are offering services and sharing experiences and looking out for one another in our neighborhoods, joining with neighbors to look for lost pets, for example. I don't think it's helpful to surround ourselves only with people who agree with us, which some of us choose to do, creating inner circles and excluding all the rest. We here are meant to serve all the residents, all 13,000. And everybody has their own opinion of what is best for Bedford. And no one's opinion is more valid than anyone else's. Building walls and factions is not for the sake of community. I can explain it in so many words, but for me, the question becomes, is it better to be right or is it better to be loving? I don't know. But what has been attracted to some of these meetings and council at large is neither, neither right nor loving, just hard feelings between certain of us. And without going into details, has been unfortunate for the whole. So I hope there can be some reconciliation finally and recognition of the goodness of things, the things that you hear about that are certainly good things for Bedford, that are in the works and trying to make happen. This is a momentous time in our human history and we need to take more personal responsibility, I think, to pull for one another and have a certain measure of acceptance and tolerance for each other. Thank you and end of report.
Thank you, Wally. Mr. Fluharty. You always put me after him all the time. I really forgot what I was gonna say now. I just want to, Mike, thank you for the turkeys that I handed out a few weeks ago for, for Thanksgiving. They were really appreciative of that neighborhood. Other than that, I have nothing else to report. Thank you. Mr. Smith.
Good evening. Just like I said, I hope everyone had a good Thanksgiving. Hope that you have a greater and more festive Christmas. Saying that, you know, Christmas is a time of giving. So I'm actually a part of an organization, Free in a Second Inch, York Right Masons, First Hall Origin National Compact. And we usually try to do not only things in Cleveland, but I try to bring some of the things here to Bedford. Yesterday, we were in Euclid. We did a, at the South Theater. We did a coat giveaway, socks, gloves, PPE products and that type thing. Just coming Saturday, I'd like to invite Bedford community. We're having, it's called Community Holiday Extravaganza. This is in partnership with Concerned Citizens, Invison Cleveland, Rekindle Covert Five, Shaker Heights Friends. We're having an event. We're also, we're gonna be giving away coats and more crafts fun, baked goods, music. It's gonna be from 10 to 2 at 13512 Ken's Monroe. All that we ask is, if you come or if some children come, their parents come or whatever, that you know the size. All we need to know is your size needed. And like I said, we're gonna do coats, boots, all this stuff is new. And next year, for sure, our organization will be doing something in Bedford. Meaning that, you know, newly elected, I don't have enough time to really iron out, iron out all the things to do here in Bedford. But I promise you, next year, I will be doing something for the children in Bedford. If you can ask the council, everyone who knows me on council, I'm a big child advocate. That's, that's what I'm, I'm here for. I'm not just for the resident, but our children. So you will see me doing lots of things for the, for the children in the neighborhoods. Thank you and end of report.
Thank you. Good luck with all that. I'll add one thing. I'm sure, Mike, you know that Dominion finally finished up on the Archer Road area and planted grass. I'm sure they'll be back in the spring to redo it, but they finally got it done, filled all the holes. And John's getting concerned about if we have a snow or something and if anybody twists an ankle or something, that part is done. So they can get on with the crestfallen Let's finish up our business. Resolution number 2594-22.
A resolution in support of the natural hazard mitigation plan and declaring an emergency of Cuyahoga County.
They have a motion for suspension. Saunders, second by Asbury. Call the roll, please.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Fluh, Janudas?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Kochi?
Yes.
Motion's third and final. Spinks, second by Janudas. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, we actually, this is part of the county's ready certified program. They rolled this out some time ago. We were one of the first communities to receive the certification, maybe close to eight, nine years ago. They're now asking communities to go through the process to get recertified, which is what this is, before we can fully submit the information. And again, it's adopting the plan for natural hazard mitigation and, as you mentioned in the work session, human-made hazards or any threat to life or safety, adopting that plan. Part of, before we submit, we have to pass ordinance, council has to pass ordinance supporting this. Will we submit that? And then we will have county representatives out providing us with a ready certified plan.
Mr. Smith. Call the roll, please.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Kochi?
Yes.
Resolution number 2595-22.
Declaring the official intent and reasonable expectation of the city of Bedford on behalf of the state of Ohio to reimburse its 403 capital projects fund for the year 2022, which was the Broadway Avenue roadway and waterline improvement project with the proceeds of tax-exempt debt of the state of Ohio.
And I have a motion for suspension. Fluharty, second by, excuse me. He's over here. Motion, Asbury, second by Smith. Call the roll, please.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Kochi?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Fluharty, second by Spinks. Jennifer?
So this is a loan from the Ohio Public Works Commission. And in order to receive the funds and reimburse ourselves, they're requiring this resolution in order to do so. It's already been approved for it and for the funding. We just need to ask them for their reimbursement.
More paperwork. Questions? Call the roll, please.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Kochi?
Yes.
Ordinance number 10039-22.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with NIX Tree Service Division for removal of larger hazardous trees at various locations throughout the city that are too big for our service department and declaring an emergency.
They have a motion for suspension by Spinks, second by Fluharty. Call the roll, please.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Kochi?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Smith, second by Asbury. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Towards the end of each year, we identify large trees. We actually, throughout the year, we work to identify large trees. And near the end of the year, we include these into one project where we go out and obtain quotes. This year, we have a number of trees located along Archer and McKinley. We received two quotes, first being Davy, sorry, first being NIX Tree Service, which is the lowest at $11,225. The second quote that came in was from Davy Tree and that was almost $13,000. Our recommendation is to go with NIX. And this is, as the lodger act was stated, not only it's removal of trees, grinding of the stumps, clearing away the debris, but it's in areas where some of these trees are simply too large for our crews and our arborists to remove. They're in challenging areas, some with the high, high power lines. And we're just more comfortable servicing this out.
Questions? Call the roll, please.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
abstain.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Kochi?
Yes.
And now we come to the portion of hearing of citizens. If you wish to speak, please come forward, state your name, your address, and your comment.
Hello, Ralph King, 107 Woodrow. Councilman Janudas, Wally, if I may, you know, you and I are probably Councilman Janudas, Wally, if I may, you know, you and I are probably two polar opposite ends of the political spectrum.
Right.
Left and right. And I gotta tell you, you are probably one of the biggest assets we have to our community. And I cannot tell you how much I respect you and your comments and your being sincere about wanting to hear what residents have to say and actually putting thought into what residents have to say. And a lot of the things that you brought up regarding the Rita resolution are all very legitimate questions. I know some people want to claim that they're open and they're doing this for the best of the residents, but, Wally, or, I'm sorry, Councilman Janudas, many of those questions have arisen because if you take a look at City of Bedford's Twitter, City of Bedford's Facebook page, the last two City of Bedford newsletters that they put out, the City of Bedford website, there is not one thing, one thing at all, that we are going to do something of the magnitude of turning everything over to Rita. When people do try to share this information, Mayor calls you the keyboard warrior. And that's why I came up here today, because I do not have to hide behind any keyboard. Mayor, your council in the last YouTube was very clear what you said about keyboard warriors. So what I'll ask you is, how is anybody in the community to know what council is doing if you don't put nothing out there? People cannot read minds. So we try to share this information to try to get it out to the community, because right now with the way, hearings of citizens, we could only talk at the end of the meetings. So we lose the first meeting, because you guys already vote on a resolution or an ordinance. So we have the second meeting, this meeting, to come up and voice our opinions. That's it. The third meeting, we don't get to speak until the end again. So as residents and citizens of the community, we are really only afforded one opportunity to speak on something whether we support or whether we are against something. So if we wanna start moving forward as a community where we do value resident input and look for resident input, I know you guys are looking at possibly changing what people are allowed to say at the meetings. And I agree. Comments at the meeting should be in reference to what's on the agenda for us, that, that is what we're here for. So to that end, as far as the Rita proposal, the resolution, if I understand correctly from the comments in the YouTube video, having watched it and from what I've read on there watching it and reading it, we are only gonna be turning over a portion of the tax department to Rita. Is that correct?
That's it.
Okay. And it's really not necessarily, I think somebody said, it's not a 20-year thing, it's, you know, could be done on a yearly basis. Problem with that is, the problem with that is, your resolution doesn't state that. Your resolution states the administration and collections. That doesn't state, oh, I'm gonna turn over the facilitating, that states the administration and collections. That states you're turning everything over to Rita. And what you guys may intend, and it may be very well nature, you may be, you know, that's not what you use our passing. But I would say, doing your due diligence, you should pass a resolution which specifically states what you are intending on doing, that we are only turning over the facilitations, not the collections, not the administration, and it's going to be done on a yearly basis, because that's what you're telling the residents you are going to be doing. That's inconsistent with the resolution that you guys are agreeing to do. That's the first thing. The other thing is, I understand we're doing this because we don't, can't find anybody to fill these positions. So we promoted these people to other places without finding somebody to replace them. Being a fireman, that's like putting on a fire and you send a guy in there, but nobody to hold the hose. Why would we promote somebody, promote positions and people that are being promoted, I love them, they're great employees of the City of Bedford, God bless them for moving up, why would we promote somebody to move up when you have nobody to fill their positions? To me, that's just bad management, doesn't make sense. So we did interview people and there was nobody that was qualified. Did I use this as my time to submit a public records request of all the applicants that applied for that positions and their resumes? Is that public record, John? Mr. Montello?
Uh huh.
Okay. Could I allow this to serve as my public request, or do I need to email it to you?
Do you want to email it to your associate?
Okay, I'll send you something tomorrow.
You know, I have to.
No, just so there's a paper, so there's a paper trail. The other thing I wanna say is, is, you know, once this is gone, it's not coming back. Once you turn this over to Rita, Councilman Janudas, again, you hit it on the head, it is not coming back. And it is a big service to the City of Bedford residents. And you can shake your head, but the resolution you're passing is giving everything over to them. Nowhere in the reso, yes, where in your resolution does it say this is gonna be done on a yearly basis? You have the resolution.
That will be all in the contract once we pass the resolution.
So you're gonna?
If we pass the resolution.
If, right. So then what you're gonna do, since obviously we can never trust what people are going to tell us, not necessarily you guys, but I know with the prison coming into Bedford, when you guys were doing that, everybody was under the impression that they were only going to do, I think it was 120 beds. That's what they led you to believe. Then when it was put in writing, we see they balked. So I would ask.
That's when we turned it down?
Right.
That's why we turned it down.
And I, we thank Councilman Malice, or, I'm sorry, City Manager Malice, for putting that in there at the planning, I think it was a planning commission meeting. That was a very good job. So I would ask you guys, before you do anything with the resolution, to get something in writing from Rita, laying out the exact services that they are going to provide, and have those actually included in a new resolution. Because I don't understand if we're, we're gonna do three readings on this, all of a sudden we gotta throw in another quick, quick reading to hurry up and get it done. So I would ask you guys, do your due diligence as council, and seeing what happened with the prison, that you guys would get in writing from Rita, savings that they're gonna do us, exactly the services that they're gonna do us, exactly the services that they're gonna offer to citizens. Without something like that, passing this and moving forward with a resolution that does not reflect what you guys are saying is irresponsible. So, Wally, Councilman Janudas, thank you again for all your concern. And you know what? If the city would embrace, instead of calling us keyboard warriors, they would say, hey, we're doing this, will you guys go out and share this so our, you know, the people in our city can find out what's going on? We'd be more than happy to. We've shown that, we have done it. But again, to date, even with all this people complaining, people don't know what's going on, nothing has been put on the city website, nothing has been put Twitter, Facebook page, newsletter. Nothing is been put out to any of this. That's why the residents don't know what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lori Lafferty, 18th St. Monroe. I'm here about Rita. And there have been a number of comments, some of this might sound very repetitive. The first thing I wanted to tell you is I was very disappointed in the lack of communication from city leaders to the residents regarding what was going to happen. And I think part of the concern of the residents, the ones who are, who are, you're hearing from, that this was set to be put through on an emergency basis, as an emergency measure. And I appreciate the fact that it's going on three readings. I do echo the fact that there's really not a lot of opportunity for residents to speak, because you vote, then we talk, and then you vote, and then we talk. So I appreciated the opportunity to contact my councilman, and I did. And I appreciated the time that he took. And we didn't have a meeting of the minds, per se, when we had that conversation, I'm still hoping that we will. But I do think that there has been a lack of communication from those in a position of leadership. We were asked a couple of times to, for the residents to put ourselves in your shoes. I'd like you to put yourselves in our shoes, because you kind of are. You are residents. But you had the inside track on what was going on and we didn't. We don't know. We don't know, perhaps you do know what the savings are. Maybe you've seen the cost benefit analysis, I haven't. I have concerns about whether this is actually going to be something that's gonna benefit the city. I have major concerns that this is maybe not something that I'm going to pay out of pocket for, but perhaps this is something where we're not going to see the revenues generated that we have seen in the past. How is that calculated? I don't know. If you know, that's awesome. You're in different shoes than I am then, and I think we deserve to know. And in doing, in saying that, why don't we put it on the ballot? Why don't you let the people, if we're serving the poor and not the few, why are we not putting this on the ballot and letting the people speak? And not just those who aren't intimidated by coming up in front of you and talking to you and telling you what we think? So I do echo concerns about a lack of local control. I think they're gonna, not that I would bring my taxes up to the city to do, but there are people that do that, people who have, who have been allowed to do it, who have done it through COVID, who have had that opportunity. It's not just the seniors. And I like the fact that you look to something to do, to assist the seniors, but there are other people who actually come up and drop their W2s off, because they don't wanna bother with the city taxes. So that is going to change. And the people who have expressed that there are concerns about actually contacting Rita, we're gonna be a very, very small fish in a very big pond. Because we heard about how many people love Rita. Do they love Rita? Or have they just been not able to go back to where they were? Because once we are, once we leave, don't get it or come back. Because I think there are gonna be changes that are gonna be made, that are gonna make it very difficult for us to manage the auditing functions of, of what's coming in, what's going out, what's been applied here, what's been applied there, what's been collected. I think that could be very difficult. And I know in looking at, at cost savings, that's gonna happen. So I have concerns about, this is a big decision, it's a big jump, it's a big departure from what has been, in the 21, 22 years that I've lived in Bedford, has been the way that we 've done things. It is outsourcing. And then the final thing I wanna say is, I do agree that things should be put in writing. I think what the, the resolution says isn't very clear. I do think the term collection is an issue, because I think that when someone voluntarily, well, I think voluntarily filing your taxes is not really the kind of jungle for me, but I think that when you file your taxes when you're supposed to, and you pay your taxes the way you're supposed to, that's a collection, you are collecting those funds. But then if you have someone who goes, I'm gonna wait a little bit and see if they catch me, that's also a collection, and I think that, that's, there's a difference there. And I think that should be spelled out, and it's not. I do know a little bit about Rita, I have had dealings with Rita in the past, have heard a lot of people not like Rita, unresponsive, bureaucratic, difficult to deal with, difficult to understand, difficult for them to understand that Bedford is different than Bedford Heights, so how are they gonna get our stuff right? So I would like to see if there are things that we are going to be keeping control of that we do get those in writing. And maybe it'll be in the contract, but again, I think you've got the benefit of different shoes than we do, because we're not gonna get the chance to see the contract. I'd like to see the carve-outs, I'd like to see what they're going to do, I'd like to see what those guarantees are, I'd like to see what that cost benefit analysis looks like. They're not identical shoes. So put yourselves in our shoes. Put it on the ballot, let the people talk. There's no reason to rush this, and I appreciate, again, that we're doing this on three readings, but we talked about an emergency session so that we can get this done. It's not exactly, I think, what three readings was meant to be. So I appreciate your time, I hope, I hope that the city thinks about this before we make that look, I think it's a big departure, and I think it's a slippery slope. Thank you.
Thank you.
M. Clearson, 22 Crestwell. I would just like to know, the gas lines, will it be ran from the street to the individual homes? Because all of the gas lines on Crestwell going to the homes have been identified.
Sorry about that. They're, they're doing the, the main line's gonna be replaced, and then they'll be working on individual connections.
Okay, I was hoping someone would be here tonight for the school board, because 21 Crestwell have been sold, but that house is a mess.
I'm aware of that.
But the lady who was living there is still dropping her sign off to go to Bedford School. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Bob DeGrich at 137 San Siro Bedford, Ohio. I have comments also, Ralph had covered, covered most of this, but when I look at this, I look upon that as a cost benefit on here, analysis, and that's what a cost benefit analysis, to look at. One basic thing is, we're looking at savings on our part. If I ask, Mr. Malice, what is the expected savings for the first year if we open it? If we, if we open Rita and we do not, if you not, don't fill in the staff for it?
I mean, are you, are you asking what the cost is for staffing?
What's the, no, what's the expected savings?
I'd have to calculate both staff members, both of benefits, benefits for individuals that they're on families, we don't know who are hiring, so benefits to an individual are gonna be.
We're talking about?
Certainly, please. I try to answer your questions every week, and you just talk over me. So, please, just, I'm just, I'm trying to provide the information. So you have two union contracts that fall under a union scale, I'd have to pull that information, I'm rounding, I think they're somewhere in the range of, in the 50s. And then when you add in benefits, pensions and things like that, if an individual is under the insurance, is an individual coverage, it's gonna be a certain number. If they're under family coverage, obviously it goes to another number as well, so family coverage is on estimate somewhere between 19 and 22,000 dollars. So, you know, if you have someone in the 50s, when you add in benefits, you know, if it's a family member, you know, a cost of an individual employee could be somewhere around 75,000 dollars, somewhere in that range, times two, times some of the other ancillary items that could be trimmed in that departmental budget. Obviously, we're, we're keeping our, and I appreciate Lori, the, when we were talking in the back, paying is a collection, but maybe identifying delinquent collection. So we would be retaining some staffing there. So there's a lot of other ancillary cost savings in there to determine the, the entire amount. Based on some of the conversations that we've had with some of the cities that have recently switched over, they have had it seen an increase in overall number of filers identified. So it's hard to identify exactly how many, what those numbers would be. I don't see it going backwards, but there is a chance that we could see an increase in filers, and increase in filers can equivalent, can equate to additional dollars. So, you know, identifying and carving out items in the contract could be talked about, but I'm, I'm just kind of sharing some of those initial numbers so you can understand where any savings would be.
Can we grasp 100,000 as a round figure?
Potentially.
Okay.
Anywhere from 50 to 100, I don't wanna give you the exact.
Sure, I just wanna just grasp, okay. What I see here is, if the City of Bedford had no plans to grow, no new income to come in on that, that may make sense. But if, if the City of Bedford has a plan to grow, then as soon as we look at that, then what foresee is, let's say we save 100,000 dollars on that, a flat amount, of course, expected to cost, the cost of living will go up, but we can figure on about that amount. But when we're bringing in new businesses on that, then every. I think what we want to foresee is increase in business, that's what we talk about all the time. We'd love to have more employers coming in, and when those employers come in, and when those employers pay their income tax, we're getting all of that versus that minus 1% that's going to go to Rita. Or when we bring in more people, again, the, the real issue here is, is growth, and there's going to be a, a point in which that growth that we can gain will override any value over the $100,000 or so that we save by not having a staff in there. I'm not going to go into the depth of customer service, because they explain that. I've had issues with Rita, and I don't think Rita is really very forthcoming or personal on that sense, I think they're much more bureaucratic, but that's already been pointed out. And that's just my view, that we look at an economic analysis, it doesn't have to go to some outside source, we just have to sit down and look, what's here, what's our goal for here to the next 10 years or the next 15 years? How much would we not have to make to justify not having those two people handling it on that? I have a second point to make on this, or, it's a person, Spinks, I'm sorry, of the inconvenience that you've gone through this on that. But earlier, when you spoke of controlling what we discuss in this meeting, I feel that this is our one opportunity for public debate or public expression. No matter how we look at it, how many people will really are going to sit down and look at the, look at the Bedford webpage, and how many people are going to want to come and say something here? At this point, if we had not known about this Rita thing, and I came here and sat down on that, didn't know anything about it, would I likely come up and have something to say about it? If I have an issue at my home, that doesn't have to do with the present, you know, our present agenda here, shouldn't I have the opportunity to talk about that, whether or not it's part of that? I might have opinions on here, I might view that what I suggest would be changes on here, but if it's not my agenda, it's almost as though, to me, it's a censoring on the part of the city, of the city council. I, I understand that there are things will come out, I mean, but if it's a situation, it's a comparison of courtesy versus, you know, quite for personal expression, I choose the personal expression on that. I don't, I don't justify the idea that we shouldn't talk about anything else because someone might want to say something about it. That's just my opinion.
Thank you. You want to go again?
No.
Oh.
No.
So you're going to say, I can't make a motion to adjourn?
No, but, but I can.
Motion for adjournment? Lou Hardy? Call the roll, please.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes. Thank you all for coming.